And for the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you. Thank you all for showing up on a sunny day. How rare these events are. I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we get into the agenda. And it relates, we're beginning the more formal part of our budget process. Patrick, under your business is going to present what constitutes the first meeting of the budget. At this point, it is still a recommendation to the board. So the way to refer to it, it's still the superintendent's budget at this point. But this meeting launches the more formal part of the budget process. That said, I want to acknowledge the work that has gone into the preparation of the budget by Patrick, the administrative team, Deb on the finance side, the finance committee met at least two times in this month to review those recommendations in detail. So I want to acknowledge that. I want to thank the board members for all their effort participating as part of the finance committee. And certainly acknowledge the work that the acting team has put into the budget up to this point. And I hope, Patrick, I think as part of good news, you'll mention the music gift.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's it for my comments. Item 3.0, we have two sets of minutes to approve. Minutes from the meeting on February 26th. And if it's okay with everyone, we'll take them together. And minutes from the March 12th meeting. So do I have a motion to approve? So we have a motion by Alan, second by Lou. Take a look at the minutes, any corrections, changes? If not, all in favor? I'm going to abstain from that, so. How many are here? Five, we have five numbers, so five, four days and one abstention. Thank you. Okay, item 4.0, adjustments to the agenda. Patrick, do you have any? Okay, we have a calendar for next year, a draft, which was sent by email. Patrick or Deb put a hard copy on our desk. So why don't we, Katie, I guess, is going to do the presentation on that. And she's going to be also doing 6.2 curriculum assessment instructional updates. So why don't we just add the calendar to that? So why don't we make it 6.3? And that will be the calendar, and it's going to be an action item. If we're, I mean, if we're ready to do it, it'll be an action item. Okay, item 5.0, it's our first public session. And again, these are comments directed to items on the agenda. Sure. And just, if you just give your name and go to the up there.
I have, there's one item on the agenda. Just on the budget item, I wanted to say that, just bring up the band scheduling at Morrison, that historically, it's been a challenge for some, some each year to schedule band. And it's often scheduled against a core academic class. And that forces the students to choose between band and the class. Don't know yet if it's going to be a problem this year. But I, you know, I recall being in a board meeting in 2011. I just clipped a little piece where, I think it was Julie Rice brought up concerns about the band scheduling. And at that point, band was only going to be scheduled against probably an elective AP class. So I'm just wondering if you can, when you're doing the budget, if you can look back at band enrollment from 2011 to 2018. And do you still plan to schedule an AP free block against band? And can you consider adding some extra funds to be allocated to the budget to allow that if there is a conflict, that if we can add a section of a class if the conflict's with band? Most students wishing to take band will likely be math or science kind of students. And those tend to be the classes that can flip the lid.
And then you're talking about what?
No, I'm talking about Morse High School.
Oh, Morse, okay. Thanks. Any other public comments? Okay, we have committee reports, 6.0. Patrick, Morse High School building project update.
Yeah, we keep moving along. We went to Coney High School last week. That was very beneficial. The group of us went up and it was very helpful to see what they would do again, some mistakes maybe that they made. And their front entrance, not maybe the outside of the school, but their front entrance is designed very similarly to what we are proposing. It's having one main entrance, having the administrative offices there, kind of a cafeteria, open concept with the auditorium there. So it was well worth the trip. I know that we have another staff member that's going to South Portland tomorrow to look at their renovation. And we will be going to probably South Portland, Freeport, and Sanford over the next month just to again get, gather some more ideas. Met with the Department of Education last week. Everything is on schedule. We go up April 27th for a subcommittee meeting with the State Department of Education. And then May 9th, we go to the full Board of Education for the state of Maine to have our site budget approved. So as soon as the site budget is approved, then we will go out to bid for site contractors, award a bid at the end of May. And then at the end of June, probably, is when you will see and hear the work that will be done on Two Anchor Road as a start. And then up into the site of the school. So everything's on schedule. And we've, our architects are continuing to work with staff. They met with a group of, I think, 15 to 20 students recently. And also meeting with community members to continue to move that along. One thing I would mention, that I was going to mention under good news, but it's pertinent here, is that we've received a fair amount of, we have a goal of $700,000 for fundraising for this new school. And we are over $400,000 already to this point. And I would just like to publicly thank a few organizations and people so far. Is one is the leadership gift came from Bill and Sally Haggins that started the whole process. And we've received generous gifts also from the Davenport Fund and also from Mass Savings Institution last week. So we'd like to thank them for, I guess I would say, helping us get where we are right now. We still have asked out to quite a few organizations. So we'll continue this phase all the way up until the building opens in 2020.
Thanks, Patrick. That's, that's great news. I think, I think that kind of support just indicates the importance of Morse High School and the tradition of that school in this community. So that is great, pretty news. 6.2, Katie, curriculum assessment instruction update.
Thank you. Okay, so a couple of quick updates. And then as adjusted, I'll go through the calendar as well. So first, I mentioned last time that our kindergarten through fifth grade English Language Arts Committee would be starting. And so I just wanted to let you know that the committee has been formed. And that's the committee that's going to be looking at how to improve our reading and writing instruction, continually improve that across those grade levels. And so the way the committee has been formed is it's two representatives from each of our elementary schools. And myself running the committee along with Sandra Gorson-Chalmer was the other administrator. And then we also have some of our literacy staff who work in our buildings on the committee as well. And so our plan is to, we've only had one meeting so far. And we sort of gathered all of our biggest concerns. And then we need to narrow that down and choose two priorities that I'll continuously update you all about throughout the course of this spring and next year. Because as I've spoken about in the past, it could impact the budget. Given right now, we spent a lot of resources on our writing curriculum and purchasing that. But our reading resources are an area of concern, which I've also shared with you. And so stay tuned. That's where we are. I also wanted to talk about the Linkit data program, which is something that's currently in the budget for this coming year. It's within the tech budget, but it's sort of one of the larger new items. And so far, we've been trained together as an administrative team. At one of our last meetings, and principals were really impressed with the system and excited for how they'll be able to use it and work with it. And one of our goals this spring is to use our instructional administrative meetings that happen once a month to continue that work, to make sure that hopefully when we're using it next year, we can really hit the ground running and use that to inform our instruction. So that's really exciting that so far the product seems as good as we thought it was going to be. I spoke last time about how standardized testing was going to be starting. We've had a pretty easy testing season so far for our third through eighth graders. The Chromebooks, Dean Emerson has told me, it's been the easiest testing that we've ever done in terms of students being able to get on devices and take the test because it's electronic digital test without problems. And so the administration of it has been really easy. I want to say that middle school is already done, BMS is done?
Still doing a couple of pickups.
And how many days did you get it done in? Or normally it would take almost a month, correct? Yeah. So again, much smoother testing this year, which is great because then we don't lose as much instructional time with those funny testing schedules. I also have spoken with Dean about a lot of the technology visioning work that you have sort of requested that we start doing. And so just wanted to let you know that that is underway. And I'll be able to be prepared, probably the next meeting or the one after, to be able to talk in more detail about what we're thinking of doing in terms of having a more concise and robust plan for how we want to move the district forward with our technology K to 12. And lastly, I know that there was a board question about timeline for proficiency-based learning in diplomas. And I just wanted to quickly address that there's been some questions, not just from the board, but just in the general teacher community here. Because the education committee at the state has been, there are a couple of possible changes that could happen to PBL. One of them is getting rid of it entirely. One of it is making, you know, rules that are slightly more strict with what it looks like. But I just wanted to assure everyone, I guess, that almost every year, so this is my fifth year that I've been working with PBL, something like this has happened at the state and then nothing has changed. And so again, they're talking about possible changes and something could happen or it might not. So that's one thing to keep in mind. I think the second thing is that we're in a really good place with being on target for what the current law says. So the reason why we have to have the system fully implemented at the high school is that our current ninth graders are going to be the first class that will graduate with a proficiency-based diploma as per the law right now. And so that's why our system had to be ready. And I think sort of furthermore, you know, one thing that I've talked to the principal and soon-to-be principal of the high school about is that we really haven't gone to any extremes with what we've done at the high school in terms of our work. We've kept the, you know, 0 to 100 scale in place. We're not reporting on standards on our port cards. And so there's, there's a lot that we have really worked to make sure that both the community of teachers and around us, hopefully, is comfortable. And so I, if there are any more specific questions, I'd be happy to answer. But the reason why we are where we are is that there is, there are things, like being ready to graduate students and certify that they've passed their classes and their standards by the time they reach 12th grade, as well as their guiding principles. And so we're going to be able to do that, but pretty much at the very basic level. Questions about that one?
Thanks, Katie. Any, any questions, Katie generally?
I just wanted to make sure that that got clarified.
I do, I guess I want to go back to your last comment.
Sure.
I mean, what has, what will change in Albany is leadership.
Yes.
Over the next year or so. What is, I guess, I mean, is PBL widely embraced by the education community? The initial push for this came from?
Yeah, it's a great question.
Of the agenda.
I mean, it really depends on what state you're in. New Hampshire has fully embraced it as a system. Maine in the legislature currently has fully embraced it. So I don't know if I feel comfortable, when I was in Massachusetts working in Boston, there wasn't really much talk about it. I don't know if I feel comfortable answering more than that. That's sort of the scope of where I know it is and is not happening. But I will say, regardless of what happens when the government changes soon, really what this law has made Morse and all of our schools, and really the schools across Maine do, no matter how extreme you've interpreted the law or traditionally you've interpreted the law, we're much more in the traditional scope of things at the high school level, which I think is perfect for our community. The work that it's made teachers do, looking at their practice, looking at how they teach students and assess students, would be work we should be thinking about regardless of any law. And so if it does all change, it won't be for nothing. We would have gotten a lot of really good work out of it, both for our teachers and our students.
Okay, is there an opportunity under the Maine law, I guess I just don't know this, is there an opportunity for waivers, in other words, to?
No, not currently. But you never know.
It just, it just seems to me that at times, as you described, leadership in Augusta has been ambivalent, you know? And then other times, they seem to be very enthusiastic, pushing forward. One thing consistently, they seem to have failed to provide additional resources to districts that would make implementation of this go more smoothly and a more regular way.
Right.
And I just, I'm glad, I'm pleading, or I'm glad that you majored in your last comment. I mean, this is work that has, has helped our instructional professionals here in the district.
Without a doubt.
Regardless of whether it goes to a fully implemented diploma.
If it disappeared tomorrow, we would, are be in a better place because of it.
Okay. Any comments, Sarah?
So now, oh, sorry.
You got, you got, what did you say?
I forgot.
6.3 calendar.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you all should have a draft of the calendar. And there isn't a ton for me to report here because most items have just moved forward as they do from year to year. There are a couple of highlights I do want to make that are adjustments that both the administrative team and the association's calendar committee and I have sort of been together. So first, in the teacher contract, you can see that the first day that teachers are back would be August 27th, and that's a Monday. And in the contract, it is said that they don't need to work unless it's approved by a vote before the Tuesday before Labor Day. And so I do have the results of their vote. And 70.5% of them voted that they would like to start on that Monday, even though it's different than what their contract states. Next, the professional development days that are happening are five per year. Two, just like this year, will occur before the students return. Three that are happening during the actual school year. The first one, I just wanted to share that everyone's really excited about. On October 12th, the administrators and all of the staff and the district will actually all travel together to the ACTM conference, which is a technology-based conference that happens once a year. And so I think that that's a really exciting opportunity to think more about some of the technology questions that the board has put forward for us. The November PD day, just so the board is aware, is actually, so that would be November 6th. We originally wanted the second PD to be, PD day to be in January, but that's actually voting day. And the towns and the schools where that's occurring, because it's going to be larger attendance, recommended that we not have students that day. And so that day is a little earlier than we would like, but it makes sense for the safety of our students and just for things like, logistically like parking. So that's what, and the association agreed with us on that as well. And then finally, our last PD day is in March. So we can sort of use that one to close out the year. Other than that, most of the other items are all the same as they have been approved in the past. I'm not sure if there are any questions.
Any questions? There's no conflict with religious holidays?
No.
Jewish holidays? Okay, so what's the board's pleasure? Should we, you want to act on the calendar? From what Patrick said, we don't necessarily need to adopt it tonight. Do you feel comfortable with it? We could adopt it tonight? Get a motion then, we approve the calendar? Motion by Bill, second? Second by Anita, so we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? No, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So Sarah, 7.0, student representative.
I just have a couple of things to say about my class, senior class. We had a really good day yesterday fundraising for Project Graduation. We had a breakfast in fifth school at the, it's a college course, yeah. And we also had the Polar Plunge. And there were actually a lot more people that participated than I thought. And we raised a good amount of money and it was really fun. We all kind of, just kind of had fun together. We were all like standing on the beach in a huddle, singing the Blue and the White Song. And it was just kind of cool. I don't know, we really are looking forward to these last two months. And two weeks ago, we had a meeting in the theater and got our cap and gown ready, all set and everything. So yeah, it's just a couple of updates and that's all I really have, but yeah.
Did you get your meeting? Did you get your meeting with Bill? Was he on the interview?
No, again, it's Sarah's. I'm not sure how wrong selected students, but yeah, it had 15 to 20. And I don't know if it was SCLC or if it was a different group, but so.
Students did meet.
Okay, thank you very much, Sarah. Thank you. Okay, 8.0, superintendent's report.
Just a couple of items. The Bath Elementary PTA and Patref Library have collaborated recently to put on what's called Books on the Bus. That's basically what it sounds like. But basically, it's trying to coordinate people to make, I guess you call it these, sew these pouches, I guess, that you can put behind the seats. Not on every seat, but on a handful of seats on a bus so that we can promote literacy for students that are riding home or riding to. So we'd like to thank both the PTA and Patref Library for their help with that. Career Fair coming up on April 10th at BMS for all of our eighth graders. Odyssey to mind, we had four schools qualify for the state tournament. And one team finished first in their category and three teams took second place. So the states are April 7th, I believe, at Benifer High School. So congratulations to those teams. And also, we have a handful of volunteers that gave a lot of time and were there at Brunswick High School a couple of weeks ago. So thank you to them as well. Steve mentioned this earlier. Many of you have seen the article in multiple papers regarding a $50,000 donation to create a music enrichment fund. And that was done so by 1962 Morse graduate Alan Como, and who made this generous donation. And the money will be used to provide scholarships to students so they can attend summer camps, as well as money will be used to expose students to live performances such as the Portland Symphony Orchestra. And then lastly, I just got this recently, so hopefully I have the bulk of it correct. But just a congratulations to senior Emma Gould. She was at the Maine State Science Fair this past weekend. And she received three different awards. I believe one was a third place overall, and I think out of around 300 students. And she also, her content of her work was on phytoplankton. And UNE professors were there and they were impressed enough to give her or offer her four years of a $25,000 scholarship. And she was also recognized for her creativity. So I know she was thinking of going to school in Florida. And so maybe this will change her mind, but congratulations up to her. And I also met with the Ocean Bowl team that you approved to go to Colorado at, over April break. And I met with their advisor today. It's just impressive, the amount of work that they're doing. And so we invited them to come to our May 21st board meeting so they can talk about their experiences, how we did representing our region. So they've, again, they're putting in a lot of work. And they fundraised, I think they're a little bit short right now, but they'll get there. So that's it.
Excellent. How do you schedule an Ocean Bowl? Anyways, financial report, Deb?
Tonight, we're looking at February. We've spent almost $17 million out of our $28 million budget. And we have four months remaining. This percentage is right in line with last year. And it's basically, it shows how we spend the funds more than anything. I mean, it shows me that, that we're pretty much in line. Special ed is going to be a little bit short in regular instruction versus the tuition. So hopefully we'll have enough left in the tuition to offset that shortage in the staffing. We did receive final notification from DOE of our last reduction for main care. And that's $37,000 or so. A total of about $232,000 this year has been reduced for main care, reduced from the subsidies, how they handle that. care, reduced from the subsidies, how they handle that. As far as revenue, we brought in about 66%, and once again, that's in line with what we've done in the past. We're bringing in more on interest, and we're bringing in more on the student activity account, and that's for gate receipts and all that for our games. And that's about it. Questions?
Any questions for Deb? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay, item nine point oh, old business. Nine point one is review of the 17, 18 board goals. Jen usually leads us in this, but she's not here. And just to bring, this isn't an action item, we're not going to act on it tonight, but this conflict for Jen, this meeting conflict, it's kind of a recurring thing, so we may be talking to individual board members and the board as a whole to see whether or not we can switch the meeting dates from this Monday to perhaps another Monday during the week. Jen, I guess, is not routinely able to schedule this night because of the conflicts. Anyways, our issue one goals, they certainly seem to be well, well along with goal one, which relates to the Morse Building Project. We continue to look at our communications issues and proceed there. Are we doing a board presentation to the board?
Yeah, I think it's scheduled for May.
May, okay. So goal three will address your May meeting, and the evaluation system is also an ongoing activity for us. Okay, item nine point two is Bath Middle School schedule change proposal, and this is Martin as the action item. I know the board has discussed this at length at the March meeting, they had a special meeting in March, we can discuss this as well.
Sure. So at the March meeting, you guys had a bunch of questions. I very appreciate the time that you gave and the thought you put into it. And as part of that meeting, one of the teachers at Bath Middle School put forward an idea to look at a team teaching model for the visual and industrial arts. And the board requested that I look into scheduling and program wise, what does that fit look like? And then to meet with the teachers to try and determine how we can move forward, and could be looking to try and pilot that for next year. And so it fits perfectly within our schedule, there are no conflicts whatsoever, and it would still allow us to make the changes that I'm proposing to benefit the core content classes. And I did meet with Steve, the industrial arts instructor last week. We sat down for about 45 minutes to discuss what that team teaching model could look like, how we could best pilot that for next year. And I think it would be fair to say that the three of us left that meeting feeling pretty excited about the possibilities and what that could look like for our kids, the benefits that it would have. So at this point, what I would propose is that for next year, we reduce the computer science exploratory and add a social studies position. We pilot the team teaching model of visual industrial arts. That would be done with one of their classes making up between 25 and 30 students. And then next year, the three of us would present to the board on what that looked like, how things have gone, and the benefits to the students. And then we would make another decision next year as to fund another position or to reduce that industrial arts position. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So just logistically, so the, because originally we're talking, you could do one social studies, and then you could bring in another one?
Yes.
So if the team teaching works out and all looks good, you could still bring in another social studies?
Yes, we could. It would just mean adding that position to the middle.
Right, yeah, you would be requesting additional position.
Yes, well, logistically, it fits in overall.
Okay.
So can you hear that? Next year, are you going to do additional portion of our adoption?
Yes, that's correct.
But you're still continuing with tech ed, with technology education?
Yes, that would be, that's part of the pilot next year, so they would have, the majority of their classes would still be the regular tech ed instruction as it has been, and then one of those classes would be a co-teaching pilot with our visual arts instructor.
And then when the tech ed, when the technology education goes away and you left with the code, the co-teaching model, that's your description?
Well, so next year, the board would have to decide whether to add us to another social studies position, and we would then keep that tech ed position, and they would co-teach their classes with visual arts, or the board could decide not to add a position and then reduce or eliminate tech ed position, and then pull in the social studies position.
So it's another variation on the?
What's that?
It's another variation on the theme of trying to add English or?
Yeah, by adding this, the social studies position is more about increasing the amount of content time for our math, science, and ELA. It also allows us to change the humanities model to better fit the needs that we have.
So then after, so it's the pilot, one of the classes, what you're saying for next year? And then we would look at it and say, hey, Jackie, do they all feel like, hey, this looks great? You know, if they know work to do, and if they're co-teaching, whatever, we need to add a position, the social studies, that will be the debate, the issue in the right moment.
So any other, any questions? Alan, answer?
And then just one more question. So they don't talk about this, just to make sure we're all the same age, so then we will continue as a district to look at how we can incorporate computer education, technology education in a meaningful way?
Yes, and that, I think, is what Katie was alluding to when she talked about the conversations that she's had with Dee Emerson, and looking at K-12, how to be, kind of a more cohesive approach to that computer science education in the district.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all the same age. Okay.
I mean, for me, to some extent, I've raised this for Katie, I guess, to me, to some extent, that's been the problem with this presentation, is that we've lost the context of how this change affects our K through 12, the progression of kids K through 12, and whether this change has its primary and sole effect on middle school kids, or how it's going to influence what happens before, and how it prepares kids as they move into varsity. So, I mean, hopefully, you know, as we go forward and look at these kinds of changes, I mean, at least in my mind, we have to, we have to start looking at this as a K through 12, or not bits of, you know, elementary program, middle school program, high school program, and what that progression is, and how we address the needs of our kids when they, and once they graduate, as they graduate to K through 12.
And I would just respectfully disagree with that, because I think the group that looked at this, looked at that ELA, looked at that core, looked at how our students are performing, and really need to get, feel, or need to get back to having more of that literacy time across the board, and then try to look at computer technology from a district perspective that we, you know, whether it's right or wrong, we're trying to look at that consistency, that we don't have a set curriculum K to five, we don't have a computer technology teacher at our other middle school, we don't offer industrial arts, you know, it's here, just like home economics used to be probably 10 years ago, and where's the feeder program for that? So I think, you know, it's never easy when we're looking to do something different, but I do think that the team tried to look at it from a comprehensive standpoint to try to decide what's best for students overall.
Yeah, because I think that whole concept of by providing, making sure those who specialize in ELA are teaching ELA, and that the kids get more time, that does affect the high school, because then what you're doing is, the kids in middle school are getting that instruction all the way through, and they're ready for high school. And I think that was a key element to what they were looking at, so I do think there was that effect as well.
Yeah, I mean, it happens, I'm just saying, it should be part of our decision, not just how this influences six, you know, the middle school kids, but how it influences our grade. Don't disagree with you. So anyways, are we, are we ready to make a decision? Okay? So?
Do I get a motion?
So just so you know, I don't want to say what to say. The position does have to, should include, you know, the recommendation to eliminate a certain program, and then to authorize the school system to hire a social studies teacher in the place of that eliminated program. The, I mean, computer technology.
So I guess the motion, I just want to make sure. So I guess the motion is that we support the recommendation to eliminate the current computer technology position, create a pilot program with art and tech ed, and hire a social studies teacher for the next fiscal year. Or is there any other thing else out there? And?
So we'll check, we'll check on.
So I guess that's, I guess that's the motion.
We'll check on the process. Okay, so we have a motion to eliminate the tech ed position, proceeding with the implementation of a proposal that's written, as described in, and to hire a social studies teacher this budget. So we have a motion by Blue, second by Bill, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Thanks for your hard work on this, Amanda, Katie, Patrick. It was well thought, very thoughtful proposal, well thought out, and you were very patient with us on this, we appreciate it. There was a lot of, thank you.
Well, and thank you for incorporating and allowing, you know, the staff, so Jackie was able to come forward, thank you for that, for, you know, it really became a collaborative process, I think, for the whole, while we certainly don't, obviously, a position have to go, I think if we're clear, good, that'll come with it. You know, sometimes you have to make those decisions, so, you know, thank you all, and all the staff, and Jackie, thanks for all the input on that, and for being the great leaders for letting that happen.
Okay, nine point three, we have a second reading of policies. ADC and ADCR, these are tobacco use and possession. This is the second reading, so it's in action, it's in action right now. Do I have a motion? The motion for blue, second. Second by Alan. Any discussion? Not, all in favor? Repose? Motion carries. New business, Patrick?
Excuse me, there's another, we have another second reading.
Another question?
Second reading of policy JLCD, which is Administration of Medication to Students, and again, this is in action. Action item? Do I have a motion? Motion by Alan to a floating, second by Blue. Any questions? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now go to Patrick for the first reading of the budget.
So the first reading of the budget, if you came in, I don't know if you grabbed it on the table, I'm not going to go down through every single line on this budget, but I'm going to give just a quick overview and see if the board has any questions. But we do have a meeting scheduled out from now until, over the next two months, for public input on the budget. So as Steve alluded to at the beginning of the meeting, this started in December with a retreat with the board and the administrative team, and then we've had meetings in January all the way through March, where we have two pretty full days with our finance committee, and our finance committee is made up of board members, but it's also made up of two community members as well that are very important to the process. So just a couple of quick things, our enrollment district-wide stayed pretty consistent from last year to this year, which is positive from a state subsidy standpoint, but also from just building a budget with staff. And we also received around 690 additional monies in state subsidy, which is positive as you could probably read in the paper, some school districts lost money, and we gained money. So in order to, as the administrators came in with their non-labor budgets, we directed them to go back and reduce those non-labor, because the finance committee wanted to us, wanted us to come in at a 4% or less increase overall in this first reading of the budget. So we directed them to go back and reduce that piece. I would say that for those of you that were in those meetings, that I would say that the connected math program materials and supplies that they need are still, is still in there, so I know that was a question by a couple of you. So they reduced the non-labor. In this budget, on the, near the end, I'll point out a couple pages to you afterwards, but just to show you what's in this budget, is additions to the FY19 budget that are currently already in this budget, if that makes any sense. So they happened after we passed our budget last year. So one that probably doesn't surprise the board here is, we do have three additional special ed ed techs, because we had students move into the district over this year, and that our special ed director feels like we need to keep those three ed techs going into FY19. When we, when our former assistant superintendent retired, we had our new assistant superintendent become full-time. It was 80%, now it's a full-time position. Again, that was done after the budget, so that's another thing that we listed as a new position, so to speak, or additional money. And then the other one was after the school year started, remember, you approved the part-time finance clerk at Central Office to help Deb in the business office. So those three things are kind of already in our budget, but we needed to reflect them accurately. The two new positions are three, I guess you would say, three positions would be, one is an ed tech, three at Woolwich for, it's a math interventionist, so it's a math support person for our elementary students and middle school students there. Woolwich does not receive federal money to have literacy or math support, and this is a need that we have. And the other position, you know, right now, we have one assistant principal shared between Woolwich and Bath Middle School, and what we're proposing to do is to have two dean of students in lieu of that one assistant principal position. So next year, we would have a dean of students here at BMS full-time, and we would have a dean of students at Woolwich full-time. So the administrative team has priorities in year one, two, and three, and these are the two that really came to the top when we had our discussions as an administrative team. So if you do want to take your packet that you picked up, just briefly, I'll go over a few numbers. So the local contribution right now is at 2.64%, and the overall increase in total expenses is 3.87. So again, the finance committee wanted us to come in at under four this first reading, it's three. it's 3.87 right now. Below that is what most people are interested in, is you can see the four communities, and you can see Arousik right now being a 0.99% increase, Bath being a 3.67, Phippsburg being a negative 3.78, and Woolwich being an increase of 5.26. And again, that is based on our cost sharing formula. If people, like, for example, Woolwich has an increased K to 12 of eight students, and it was kind of interesting to note too, Deb did a kind of a research that Woolwich over the last 10 years is the, is the community that continues to, the student numbers continue to increase over that period of time. So that's where we're at right now. I will, if you want to turn to page two, on line number one, under regular instruction, that 4.63% increase, that is where those proposed positions, they're in there. So that two dean of students as well as an ed tech three are in that line number one. And then if you go down to line number seven, under school administration, the reason you see a decrease there is that our assistant principal that we have now, that position, you know, has moved up to number one. If you look at number nine, operation of payments, you know, under Dave's budget, it looks like a pretty hefty increase, but you see how it's 220,000 and change. 123 of that is our projected increase for fuel oil because we haven't gone out to bid and it's going to be, you know, it's going to be significantly higher than what we are locked in right now. And the other 70, another 70,000 is the non-state funded, you know, bond, the BMS Woolwich and 2014 bond, our first principal and interest, I mean, first principal payment, and we also pay interest on that as well. So... Yeah, the, this non-state funded, yes. So those are the, I guess, the big ticket items, pages three through nine, or, I mean, I don't know if you want to get down to the weeds on the major increases there, we could do that, but usually the first reading is to let people know what the increase is right now in this proposed budget. And again, we didn't get, we didn't put in everything in our priority one that we felt was, we just were trying to balance what the communities can support with moving forward educationally.
You're, you're treating the new position, the new social studies position, that's pretty much a wall. Questions? Do you want to add anything? No? Did a good job.
I would point out, because this is one that always comes up, the special education, it is a big piece of our budget. So if you do look at, at the bottom of page three, the increase for staffing is around 11%, which is high, but again, that's that three new ed techs that are in there, and so, and also some adjustments that we had to make for salaries and benefits as well. But if you turn to page four, I think that's telling because you would have been very supportive of getting our behavior support programs in place here in the district, and so you can see on the top of page four, where our tuition elementary and tuition secondary, that means the money that we pay out to send students to other placements has significantly decreased, which brings our total special ed increase down to, you know, five and a half from 11 and a half. So it's, you know, showing that we're being able to bring students back or not send them out to various special ed placements.
Any, any questions of Patrick at this point? There is a, a, a public hearing on budget Monday, next Monday, it's the date of April, April, April 2nd, at which, 6 o'clock here, at which point, and as board members who've been on board for a while realize this is, it's also an opportunity for us to, to ask questions. I mean, we're, we're seeing this detail for the first time, so... I just, I just wondered, Patrick, whether, we, we are doing a couple of shared programs with other districts for special ed, and are those, there are no costs associated with those programs reflected here?
I don't know if our fee for the regional special ed program is embedded in our special ed budget for next year?
In the tuition line, we'll be charged 37,000 to, for, basically, to attend. Yeah.
One other thing I pointed out too on the last page, page seven, I'm sorry, it's just the capital reserve, we continue to put $25,000 in that every year, it doesn't seem like a lot, but that is up to $300,000, which is, you know, important to have in case there's certain things that need to be done in the district. And food service, we can, we kept that as the same as last year, and, you know, we're making, you know, we're making progress in that area as well.
Are there any costs in here associated with the new high school for engineering, the potential of those all being pushed off to the...
No, there's nothing in there. We have a separate fund, we have that bond, that, the band that we're, we have available to draw down on.
Well, we had, we had spent money, we had spent some of our surplus, right?
We did, but we have been reimbursed from that band, so that was like 1.2 million dollars that came back, and that's, it's more like a cash to cash type of thing, so...
It's not reflected in here as revenue or...
No.
Or expense side.
No.
Okay, any, any questions for Patrick? Well, at the public hearing, obviously, we'll entertain comments and questions from the public, but again, it's also an opportunity for the board to ask questions of Patrick and Deb as you get further into the budget. And Patrick and I spoke briefly, and there will be a finance committee meeting scheduled after that first public hearing, so if, if the feedback we get or comments from the board suggests that we have some further direction to, to send that to Patrick regarding the budget, items in the budget, we'll, we'll do that in context, first in the context of that, of that finance committee meeting, first part of April, and bring it to the board. Very good.
I don't think we'll see any changes with our state subsidy. You know, as you read the paper, there's a couple of different things, the CDS pieces out there, and also the vocational funding, we received it in a different format this year, but I don't, I don't see that changing, but if it does, we certainly will let you know.
Okay, 10.2, personnel issues.
And just one resignation, Julia Kearns, grade seven, eight humanities teacher at BMS, and even though Julie's only been with us for three years, she's a very professional person, a great addition to our middle school year, and she really, she has a spouse that works at BIW and she is going to have to relocate, so we will miss her, but we wish her the best.
So item, item 10.3, we have an out-of-state field, field trip request from Phippsburg, grade 45, it's a trip to Boston for science and aquarium tourism to the Long Island Freedom Trail. Motion approved? Bill, motion approved by Bill, second by Lou, all in favor? Any opposed? It's passed, and a second request from Woolwich, again, for a field trip to Boston Museum of Science and Freedom Trail, and this is for Phippsburgers. We have a motion approved. Motion by Bill, second by Lou, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have our second public session, and this can be used to address everything it chooses. Everyone didn't know as far as me.
Okay, just two quick things. The first, next Wednesday, April 4th, in this room...
Could you just state your name?
Oh, sorry, Beth Schultz, Woolwich. All my kids are in this room. Let's see, next Wednesday, April 4th, 7:00 PM, in this room is the jazz and chorus concert and dessert auction, so just wanted to put an invitation out there to anyone who'd like to attend, and dessert, anything, we'd love to see anyone there. And the other item that I had, I just wanted to circle back, I came eight years ago to talk about long division, and I addressed it eight years ago, the algorithm that's used at the elementary level. I now have two daughters in honors algebra at Morse, and they were, they brought them, they said that the teacher had to teach them traditional long division before they could move into the polynomial long division, which was my concern at the time, you know, when I came to speak about it. I, there's a, there's a handout, lovely daughter here, from her, her assignment, the other day at school, just showing long division in there, and I also put a handout, just showing you what polynomial long division looks like, but I did, I did call a couple other schools. I know at the time, when I came here eight years ago, Topson Valnera was teaching the same way we were, they've now switched back, and starting in fifth grade, they only use the standard algorithms, and they don't teach the lattice method at all, it's not even introduced. So I was just, wanted to put out there that perhaps the coordinator of that, Katie, could seek the input, I've had a great experience with the math, the math teachers at Morse, and I think they're, you know, maybe just reach out to them and see what they think about, and since they do have to introduce it into the curriculum at high school. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Thanks, Patrick. Any other, any other public comment? Item 12.0, next meeting dates and locations, we have our next regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, April 23rd, at Bath Middle School, 6 o'clock. In between that, again, oh, we have that public, we have a public hearing on the budget, second public hearing on the budget, or, it'll be that night. So the night of, Monday, April 4th, will be the second public session on the budget. Okay, item 3.0, we have need for an executive session pursuant to one LRS A 456D to discuss labor contracts. We are, we will not return to doing business, so I think we can adjourn before we go into executive session. We have to come back to it? Okay, so we want to adjourn that, we'll wait till we get our executive session. So we have a motion to go, so, motion for Lou, second by Bill to go into executive session. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you very much, we, we will return, but not, but not to take any votes from the... Thank you.